Hello, everyone.
They're okay.
They're trying to figure out what the next step's on.
Give me another chair, man. Frank, give me another chair.
I don't know. You can take this one if you want. I'll take a regular one.
Is it four of them coming or are we on? The right one?
Fire control.
He's on soon.
Where's James? James is coming.
I actually want you to order.
Hey, where's he at? He needs a chair. Where is he sitting?
So my first night, I was in the shower. And now we're trying to.
We're trying to. So that's something I'll leave with you.
Yes, and I finished. I finished the flyer. And I finished that down, but I can't do it. I can't do it. So when I go back.
As long as we tell people today.
But I finished the flyer.
So I have to talk to the chairman. He saw me. I'm so mad at you.
David's been around. When he was a star, he was my mother.
No, when.
You want this early or you want people else?
No.
No, no, no. Oh, you want. This one. Okay.
Were you the lawyer or something like that?
Recording in progress.
Does he sign it? Is anybody signed? Is it?
If anybody would like to sign into the public portion, please do not.
Are you ready?
Can we stand to salute the flag?
A pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So before we get started, I would just like to ask everyone, if we could just have a moment of silence for the youth that we lost earlier this week in the Housing Authority. The only thing I want to say as a parent is mental health is real, and it's happening. And we need to do something because unfortunately, we're using, losing our youth to it. So if we could just have a moment of silence for Mr. Boyce.
Amen.
Thank you. Director, would you like to go?
Anthony Forbes. Andrew Oposado.
Here.
Aaron Lewit.
Here.
Carmen Reyes.
Here.
Michael Russo.
Present.
James Sanford. Erica Sutman.
Present.
I would like to advise those present that the notice of the regular meeting of the Hoboken Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions on the Public, Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this regular meeting Thursday, August 11, was given by publication of the annual meeting notice of the authority with amendments as necessary and was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, August 2, 2022, as notification to the general public of said meeting and sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, August 2, 2022, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the Bolton Board in City Hall, Hoboken Library, and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority's website on August 2, 2022. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. Do we have anyone signed up for public portion? Before we start our public portion, I'd just like to ask everyone, when you do come up to speak, I ask that you speak respectfully to everyone on this board. And I ask you to direct me as the chair, and you will then speak to whomever you're addressing. Thank you. Adrian Rollin?
The electrical issues that I had last month were only resolved after Sammy showed up with the electrician and actually physically pointed out what was wrong. The electrician didn't even bother to do that. All he kept was, you're overloading the outlets. Okay, so what outlets will we do? We didn't know anything. After meeting with Mr. Recco, I said, I think after one or two calls about the same issue, maybe an investigation should be done. I don't know anything about electrical. I was trusting on the expertise I could quote maybe of the person who can do that. I shouldn't have had to call as many times as I did. It shouldn't have to come to that extent. Six, eight times. I don't know how many times it was. There was just one too many. Go through the process of, first time, okay, let's change the fuse. Second time, all right, let's see what else. Wasn't a panel. But then there's a third, fourth, and fifth time. Help the residents. Don't just yell at them and scream at them and give them an attitude and, oh, it's your fault. It's your fault. I don't know what's my fault. You're not telling me. You're not helping me. I'm not an electrician. You are. Give me some pointers on what to do. And only after Sammy came in with him and said, that should be replaced. That should be replaced. My son replaced it. We haven't had any issues since. But it shouldn't have had to come to have Sammy come in and do his job for him. That's just not unacceptable. And then a kitchen issue that happened, apparently, and I believe I sent the email with the photos. A pipe broke. And they replaced the pipe, but in the process, they left everything wet. They didn't bother to ask for anything to clean it up. The whole, when you open up underneath the kitchen sink, everything. When I got home at 5:30, 6 o'clock, it was still wet. I'm like, and my son had other things to do. My daughter was doing other things. So that wasn't on the forefront of their minds to take care of anything because they assumed that maintenance would clean up after themselves, which they should be doing when they go and do a job in a residence unit. I shouldn't have to clean up after you. I have to clean up after my own kids. I'm not cleaning up after a grown person. I don't clean up after the boys. They do their own. Then we had exterminate, the extermination came yesterday and sprayed all the outside. I don't need one. My son takes care of all of that. But I also mentioned that we've got mice in the building, running in the stairwell. He goes, oh, that's another exterminator. I said, well, you can bring it to your boss's attention and report it to him. I've already reported it to the Housing Authority. And, you know, don't push it off on somebody else. If I'm telling you as an exterminator, I don't know to the extent what your scope of work is. How about you just, okay, ma'am, thank you. I will let my supervisor know. Not tell me, oh, it's not my job. That doesn't fly with me. I don't, I don't. And cleanliness is still an issue in my building. My daughter wanted to speak and she's too profane with her mouth, so I said no. She wants, she said, it's still dirty in the stairwells, which it is. It looks like it hasn't been cleaned for months. Outside the compact door, outside my door, looks like there's still dirt there from three weeks ago. And if I'm going to clean the hallway, I'm deducting it from the rent. So if you don't want that to happen, have your guys go each floor and do their jobs properly.
Okay. Sorry. Thank you, Adrian. Michelle, the same.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Mr. Recco, I'm here actually speaking. Yeah, I spoke to Chairwoman Barrie and I spoke to Chief of Police. I wanted to do, we did this in the past, a block party on Harrison Street. So I wanted, because there's a lot of things going on and it is, like she said, there's a lot of mental health going on without routine, just adults, teens, and the younger ones. But I want to have a fun day. We used to have that. So I would like to, and since you're here, you're passing, to have one day from 4th and Harrison to 3rd and Harrison, locked off, whatever, no cars, and everybody could come out, cook out, and just enjoy each other because there's too much sadness going on around here in Hoboken. And I want something to brighten the day. So I spoke to the chief. He said, speak to you. And then I have to go to City Hall. But I want to make this happen as soon as possible. I even spoke to Barbara about it. You know, we need this happening. We need something in our community going on. It's just sad. I'm a mom too, you know? So it's just sad. I stand outside on my stuff and I watch a lot of stuff. And I don't agree with, I don't yell like I used to yell at them because some of them are very, and I have to go in the house and get some dough. But, you know, I just want us to have, take the minor for all this other stuff that's going on. We need something to happen. And we appreciate the trip that we had. I had a good time, my friend. We walked around. Two old ladies sitting down on a tree, you know, in shade. But it was really nice. But we need something more. We need some more activity. I see that they have in the ball field, things going on. But we need to have something here again. We need something big. Something has to change. Something got to shake it up. Show us more to business unhappiness and all this sadness and everything that's going on in the world. It's more. We can still enjoy life. They can still be children. They can still be teens. They still can be young adults. But we just need to change the atmosphere a little bit, if you don't mind, you know? All right? Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, we add second chief, right on the second. It's not there.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah. Hey, why am I?
Come on, come on, Mike. We gotta make that happen.
Yes, Mike. Come on, Mike.
Councilman Ramos? Oh, we have him too.
How terrible.
We need to make that happen. Contact Phil Green. He will contact. Just tell me the date you want. We'll figure it out.
Okay, yes.
Not a problem. And we'll try and get some activities too. Just a couple of updates, hopefully for the residents. Still getting a lot of, I assure you guys as well, a lot of emails regarding waiting lists. I think everyone would just give an accurate number. If it's 50, if it's 60, because all the inaccurate information over there. Regarding that issue, just say what the accurate number is each meeting. If there's 60 people vacancies, if there's 30 vacancies, say what it is. People try to say it's like over 200 now. So just that, that'll probably serve you guys a lot better and the residents a lot better with that accurate number as far as what the vacancies are. Maybe bedrooms too as well. And transfer list, how, how you be going through the transfer list right now? Now, probably also, there's people here tonight that have asked for transfers at this meeting. And I don't think they've been transferred yet. So hopefully, you will make way to the transfer list. And again, how are we making out with the repairs to individual apartments? From the list, I think it's over 100 individuals now. I know you've went through at least 50 of them. I've received around 50 probably. I know you guys have went back through, residents, and tried to make those repairs. Hopefully, you've made some progress with the others as well and the overall maintenance of the facility. So I appreciate that. I heard you had, there's some HUD visiting you guys today. I hope that was a successful visit. And Director and I spoke, and Councilor Russo and I spoke about this as well, that whatever you guys need over the next couple of months. Director Brown, Brown and Brown is already working on redevelopment. Already the redevelopment proposal back for the city. We should hopefully have that back in mid-September. Hopefully go to Planning Board first week of October. That's our goal. Hopefully, I move that process along. So hopefully, beginning of 2024, we'll have a groundbreaking new facility. So I appreciate your efforts, everyone. So if you get the information out to the public, I should all appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Sandra Smith?
Hello, everyone. This evening, I'm talking about this building here. I just want to ask, when are we going to have the security in this building that we need? I know you have fixed the front door, which Sammy and them was working for repair. Now we have another issue. You can't buzz people in. So they're working on that too. So we need to get that addressed as soon as possible because people will have to come downstairs to let people in. Unfortunately, when you fix it, somehow it gets broken from people coming in and sleeping in the hallways. And like you said, the residents are all supposed to be talking to the people and everything, but they be trying to tell them to go because sometimes they'll walk downstairs, especially if it's on the low floor, instead of waiting for the elevators. And they also, too, as a president, ten association here, they want to know about the elevators. Is we gonna get new elevators? Because it's kind of moving a little slow. Sometimes when you in the building, you press it, it just moves. It takes about like maybe a little bit, five, eight minutes to come. So we just want that to be done. And we want like more activities here where we can have something outside in the front, like some benches. Because the sun, we only have one bench here in the park. But we have this all open. We should have some benches to sit there in a shade bar because it'd be too hot. And it need to be sprayed right there in the center of where the park at because for the simple reason, there's a lot of ants. Need power wash it or get it, because sometimes the homeless, they sit there. They don't bother. Some of them don't bother. Some are a little bit too active. But when they sit there, I guess they be trying to cool their body down or whatever. But they go urinate over there, and it needs to be cleaned. I think they did it before. I think Sammy did it before. They had cleaned over there and sprayed. So that was very helpful, but then the ants and stuff came back again. And the door, Mr. Greco, I know you had said we had a meeting with the meet and greet that to keep this community room open for the seniors because sometimes they would like to come downstairs to cool off. You know, just to mingle, not to be staying upstairs. So sometimes when it's open and when it's not open, I come and open it. Then you have somebody at nighttime to close it. If I see it open, I just tell them to press the button and lock the door and turn the light off. So these are the things that we got a lot of issues. Work orders, like somebody had said about the work orders. It need to be addressed a little bit. I know it's the manpower. You don't have it. But a lot of them contact you personally by phone or they go to Sammy or they go to Oscar or I guess they touch base with the director of maintenance. So some of them are just waiting. I know it's time consuming, but some of the appointments are really bad. And we just need like more things to be going on with the seniors that we talked about with Danny. So I talked to Frank, what we need to know. One big question I need to ask. We caused a waiting list and we did the lottery. Who oversees that? When they pick? You? Okay, so when the younger people put their application in for one bedroom, for some reason, it goes to Fox Hill for, or one, they get.
It's a separate list.
It's a separate list. But they are single, young men's or young ladies. But why they going to Fox Hill to get one apartment they're not?
You must be senior or disabled. They must be.
Yeah, but none of them are not. That's the problem.
They have to show that. They have to show their disability.
No, I'm saying they don't want to go there. They was applying for the regular apartments. But they named pool to Fox Hill. So I thought you have like a separate list for the single ones that are working. These are people that are working. I didn't have a answer, so some of them that are not residents, they want to know.
I can talk to you about.
Oh, okay. And the ones that are on the waiting list, do it goes back or it stays? On the list? The people that have been on there for many, many years are on the waiting list for apartments? Do it be still on the waiting list until the number goes up? Or it just throw away or they have to reply again? Because a lot of them reply again when they had the list open again. That's a question.
That's something, I guess.
I can answer now.
Sure, you can answer.
So if someone, before we got to start picking names off on the current list, we had to exhaust the old list. So we did a purge of the old list. We sent letters to everybody. Whoever responded, they stayed. Whatever the last few people that were still on that list. Because remember, part of the problems, we had a promise they were ready, but no people on the list. We would call people and they weren't taking the apartments. So that's when we exhausted that list low enough, that's when we had to open up our waiting list. So currently, right now, there are no people that are waiting from the old list because we purged that list. We gave everybody an opportunity to respond to it. And the people that did, and then very few people off the old list that actually responded and then stayed on. So those folks that you're asking about in Fox Hill, there's two separate waiting lists. So if someone only applied in Fox Hill, or maybe even if they applied.
Why they just put an application and just get apartment for one bedroom?
Maybe they only applied in Fox Hill, and luckily it came out. But that's why they would wind up over there. You can't, the Fox Hill list and the public councilman list don't co-mingle. It's two completely separate programs. So you can apply for both. And you could potentially be selected for both. And then you're in Fox Hill, and then six months later, your other application comes out and you can take that one as well. However, you can't take one person from one list and move them to another program. I can't even move anybody that's here into Fox Hill or anybody from Fox Hill to here. This is completely separate funding programs.
Okay. Another thing, do you, I know you said you don't separate families. But people are saying some families are being separated.
What we do have, Sandra, is senior accommodation. So if someone in the household is senior or disabled, and we can accommodate the senior that way, we're not looking at that as a split. That would be we're accommodating the senior. That's the only circumstance under which now a family could potentially be separated. So. Senior and disabled.
Okay, so, so the one, this is my understanding. When you separated, one family comes in here, but the other young one is over there. I know my time is up. But, you know, that's understanding that a lot of them is not getting it. And I saw a family to split, and it wasn't disabled, but they split them. So I didn't have no words for them, but I told them they need to come to the meeting. So they need to talk about it. And then y'all could answer their question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
I just want to remind everybody too, and I mean, we opened this meeting with moment of silence. You know, a lot of times, when it comes to citizens that are disabled, there's multiple levels of that. And they may not seem disabled, but they may not have a physical disability. But there are, there are multiple levels to that. So sometimes it may, it may not be as apparent. And those individuals are not necessarily going to share that information, right? So I know, and I know this factually because I've been on top of the director in a number of instances now, the due diligence is done, right? We know if someone is being accommodated because of a disability, we have all that documentation. We have everything. We understand what's going on. That may not be apparent to someone outside of the administration, but it's happening. So I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that.
Thank you.
No other members?
No one else would like to go radio.
I have some, I just want to ask. Okay?
Yes, sure.
Do I need to come up there? Yes.
Good evening, everybody. Happy Thursday. Doris Mitchell, 300 Marshall Drive. I want to know, what do you, what can we do about the scamps? The bratton homes, the groundhogs? I mean, they jumping around everywhere around here. I mean, you can't even walk out here because they'll meet you and say, good evening, or good morning. It's just that bad, okay? In 218 over there where Sister Right here live at, my daughter came out the building and the scamp was on the steps. Now she's saying that it's a big hole.
It is.
All around that area. Now I know, you know, you might have to deal with the animal control folks, you know? But it's really getting bad. That you really can't come out. And, you know, I don't have anything about against anybody cooking out. But when they cook out, they don't clean up. So they are looking for food. And this is one of the problems right there, okay? So that's basically, in the building that they have spoke about not being clean or whatever. I mean, because I had a rollaway bed in my hallway for almost a month. And yes, I called my site manager and she worked on it as much as she could. And I do understand her hands was tired because she can't do no more than is granted for her to do. So it wasn't her. But I mean, for a whole month, from July the 4th until July, I want to say about the 26th or 27th, a rollaway bed in the hallway. And ain't no way in the world you can tell me that the makers man didn't see it because Ray Charles could see it if he had a half an hour. Okay, I'm serious. I'm not trying to. I mean, how can you walk, and you done swept the hallway? You done mopped the hallway, okay? And the bed is still there. And my site manager, Ms. Oliver back there, she wrote down the day that I called. And she said, I don't believe it that they did not move that bed. So, you know, maintenance need to do a little bit better. And once again, I know, you know, the manpower. But if you working in a building and you see a bed there for a month, then you tell me what's wrong with this bitch, okay? And one more thing, and I'm going to sit down. The hallways on the side, the exit, where it just smells so bad of urine. It's got to be something that where they mopped the hallway, okay? Now the hallway's got, I have to say, they clean, but the scent in that hallway, you open up that doors, it'll kill you, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. I would just like to vouch for what she says. I think I spoke to Sammy about the holes that are in that area. I also can say that they have gone and they have filled it the best they could with what they have to fill it with. But unfortunately, they leap right through that. And within a week, I want to say, not even a week, we're back to square one. So it is. It's very bad. I think I called the director. I was locked out of, actually couldn't get in or out of my house because they were having a feast with a dead bird. So it was scum, the groundhog, everything in front of the door. So this is happening. It's happening across the Housing Authority, but it's not a Housing Authority issue. I think, Councilman, I have both of you here. And I think you guys can vouch that this is a city problem. It's the entire city that's. It's it's the entire city that's that's having this issue.
I can speak on that a little bit. I've almost become like the the council skunk and rodent professional at this point.
Ruben's plan is to have the skunks keep the rats.
Or buy a lot of cats. I didn't know this until two years ago when the skunk problem first started like, you know, really become real prominent throughout the city. That skunks are protected species in the state of New Jersey. Uh, so you have to have an outside agency, hire an outside agency to pick them up. And they'll take them 20 miles away and then release them into the wild. So we are now, you're not allowed to trap skunks. You can't kill skunks. You can't do anything that harms their life existence.
Well, they have a lot of babies.
So that's, that's having, that's, that's a huge problem. Take them 20 miles away, other skunks replace them in this area. And then two other things happened uh the past two years. Big hole in the ground on Madison Street. There's a new park over there. You're going 40 feet in the ground. That's going to disturb some wildlife that lives under the ground, which are slunks and rodents. And the second thing is taking down the palisades, which is also natural habitat where scum, where skunks live. Like Union City had a plan called Hoboken Heights, ironically. Tear down the side of the mountain. That's where rats and rodents live. That's obviously going to have a huge impact in growing that population. Then thirdly, everyone, everyone, a lot of people seem to like them is the parklets around town. Also creates, as the last speaker said, you give, you give rodents more food to eat, more of their litter, they grow their families. And so what we did as a city, uh we hired, we hired professionals to come and bait all of our sewers from Second Street to Ninth Street. From Jackson all the way to, I believe, like the Grand or Bloomfield Street.
Yeah, the garden.
But it's a very large swath of our area within within Hoboken. From Second Street to Ninth Street. And then we asked the Hoboken Business Alliance to do First Street and 14th Street and Washington Street. That's the area where that's part of their programs. And restaurants are contributing to our rodent population potentially. You see the New York City, you see Chicago, other cities that grew parklets in their town, which is great during the pandemic. But unfortunately, this is one of the unattended consequences of that. So we are working in that problem, obviously multi-layered. So if you guys want to hire uh someone to get the skunks and get them out or bait your properties as well, you know, we could like, Councilor Bruce and I give you the information of people that we hired recently. Hoboken Business Association may hire.
Who did you guys use?
To me?
Do you know who you guys used?
Uh, I I I do. I'll leave out to tomorrow.
We had somebody come in Monday.
Okay.
At 10 o'clock.
Yeah, we were baiting, we're literally baiting every sewer from Second Street to Ninth Street. And then and every, and every new construction project also has to bait their projects as well. Going forward, so.
We got a lot of babies.
We, we, because the rodents do populate a lot faster than skunks do. They do multiply. So like, yeah, I'm becoming a skunk rodent professional, unfortunately.
Add to the resume.
There you go.
We spent a dollar, Mo.
44, we spent 54,000.
Yeah, that would be pretty. So they're coming Monday, they're going to give us their first estimate. And hopefully we can do from.
We need it, guys.
They've been trying so hard. They stuffed those holes and they made a hole right next to it.
You can throw that, uh, seal in your garbage, things like that also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So could we move on now to the director's report?
Yep, thank you, everybody. Really appreciate your being here tonight. We're going to address some of the questions that came up during tonight's public comment in my report here. So thank you for coming. Um, I do have an addition to the report. Is this working, you guys working? I do have an addition to the report in that I did have a visit from HUD today. It was kind of a hastily put together thing from Department of Housing and Urban Development. There were two Assistant Secretaries of HUD that visited us. Deputy Assistant Secretary of Field Operations, Felicia Gaither and Brenda Johnson. They came along with Marilyn O'Sullivan, who's our Regional Director for HUD in the Northeast Network, who is also acting as the Director for the Newark office right now since their Director retired. And we also had two people from the Newark office that were with them. They were actually in the area for another housing authority. And they work on issues with our redevelopment, with helping us with the technical assistance, things like that. So they they see our name all the time and they wanted to come and visit us. And I got to tell you, it was an absolutely successful meeting with them. Chairman Reyes came along to talk to them as well. We informed them of everything we've been doing over the past five years. And we informed them of our strategic plan, did a review of it with them, talked about our ongoing challenges now and gave them an update like you will here later tonight on where we are with Hoboken Housing Forward. Very, very successful. They committed to us that they would continue doing technical assistance with us uh through the enterprise and other organizations, that they would continue to have folks like Mr. Ellis to be on staff with us that some of you have talked to. It was a very successful meeting. They, I think it's fair to say, they were very, they they expressed very clearly that they are very, very pleased with the direction we are and the progress we've made. And I don't know, Barbara, I think that's kind of summed it up.
You're absolutely right. They even, they walked the grounds. They went to see apartments that were fixed up, ready to be leased. And they also went to see apartments that were not fixed and were not ready. So they saw both aspects of it. They walked the buildings. They walked the four, um, I was, I, the housing Harrison Gardens, they walked that. They walked through Andrew Jackson. So they they did get an intense view of what our housing stack looks like.
It was very successful. So that's going to pay dividends in the long run. I've often found that visits like that really help us because when we do need help, they know us. And they face and and we're very, very happy they came to visit us. So I I am starting my report tonight with an update on the Hoboken Housing Forward initiative. One of the crucial decisions that we have to finalize as we move forward in the near future, not tonight, but in the near future, will be to decide our financing platforms under HUD. Specifically, if it is best to do a RAB Section 18 blend or just go here Section 18 to proceed with our project. With that in mind, we've invited Shannon Liston from Recap Advisors, member of the Enterprise Partners team that is with us via Zoom tonight, along with Christina, I think's online over there tonight with us as well. So I'd like to welcome, excuse me, them both to the meeting tonight. They've been involved with us since the beginning. Many of you, they're very familiar. Many of you have met them a number of times. And we've invited up tonight Shannon to focus in with us on this question of Section 18, Section 18 RAB blend. So they're going to give us a presentation. But I would like to just take a moment before I ask you to start speaking, Shannon, to go over where we are with our project today. And a quick update is that we have received a draft memorandum of understanding from the city. Thank you all that have pushed that from the city side. We just, we received that this past week. It's over with the attorneys with us. We're going through a review. We'll be meeting back with the city within next week to make some tweaks. And so we're pushing that forward soon. Crucial, crucial step. And once that is done, it will be brought to the board, of course, to subcommittee, and then the board from there. In cooperation with the city, we're moving forward with our study to be designated as an area in need of redevelopment. Again, thanks to the city, they have hired an engineering firm that we worked with last week to tour all of our properties. And they will be coming back. We expect that to take maybe 30, 60 days before that decision's made. We hope 30, that they get back to us from the engineering side and designate the housing authority as an area in need of redevelopment. So again, thanks to the city for pushing that. We must now perform an obsolescence study under HUD guidelines. So we're preparing an RFP for what is called, I know some of this sounds redundant, but we must perform under HUD guidelines, our own obsolescence study. So we're getting ready to go out with an RFP for that. We are arranging an initial meeting with the Housing Finance Agency. As we go down this road over the next couple of years, they're going to be a crucial partner. And it's always tough to work with them. So we're being proactive and kind of giving them fair warning that over the next three years, four years, we're going to be continually coming back to them with different phases of our projects. So and and by the way, I think our, our recent experience with them, with the loan that we've gotten from them, forgivable loan, has laid some good groundwork with them. They know us, we know them, and things have gone extremely well there. So that's a good thing. We are now studying the RFP and options on bringing on a special legal counsel for future development. That's kind of a very specialized area in legal counsels. And so we'd like to get them on sooner than later. So they're in position with us. There's only so many folks that really specialize in that. So of course, that's not to say anything about our current legal counsel, but that kind of that, that specialty with, with the development. So you'll be seeing that come to you before long. We are aiming for a special board meeting, probably in October at this point. You don't want to waste your time with a meeting that doesn't have some substantial movement. So we'll probably be back for a public meeting in October to keep everyone on the nitty gritty of where we are on our redevelopment rehabilitation. I just want to note again that I, I and my team remain available for any forum. If you've got a Rotary Club, if you've got somebody that you'd like us to address, take a look at our strategic plan. We're always available to come on out and do any kind of presentations, just like we do in our resident meetings, et cetera. We're always available for that. So that's kind of where we are now. That's what's been keeping the staff busy and and as we get all these studies done. So having said that, again, I'd like to reintroduce Shannon and Christina from Enterprise Partners and Recap Advisors. Shannon, the floor is all yours right now. Thanks for being here.
Great, thanks. Hi, everybody. Good to be back. It seems like it's been a couple of months since we last spoke. So the goal, we're hoping this will be a brief presentation. And it's really just about what, on the last presentation, it seemed that the conversation really focused or or was concentrated on whether or not to do a RAB Section 18 blend or do 100% Section 18 because there are some significant differences between the two. So back then, I said, well, why don't we, you know, let's move forward. But then we'll come back and we'll focus strictly on the differences between those two programs so that you all can make a decision. So that's basically what we're doing tonight. So Lorna, can you, can I share my screen?
And I believe as, as we're getting that shared screen, I believe we will have a copy of this presentation sent out to you all tomorrow.
I don't know, I just, is anybody working on maybe?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right, got it, got it, got it. All right, which screen? I think it's this one.
The most interesting one.
Uh, maybe not. This one, there we go, that's it. Correct one. Does it say, is it the cover page that powerfully?
We've got it, Shannon.
All right, great, okay. So so basically, what we're going to talk about is if it weren't for the financial calculation between the two different programs, doing a blend and 100%, 100% Section 18, it would probably be that we would sail through this without having to pause. But for those of you that have been keeping up, when you, when you do the difference, there's a difference between what you collect on RAB rents and what you collect on Section 18 rents. And obviously, here the Section 18 rents are higher. So there's a very significant financial component to this decision. So the first screen that you're going to see lays out for Andrew, just for Andrew Jackson because it's our biggest, it's our biggest problem property. It's the, it's the biggest AMP in the, or the biggest, has the most units in the AMP. And so I wanted to point out just, you know, to you what that looks like in dollars. And then after this, we're going to go through all of the things related to relocation and resident rights and those types of things. So strictly on a dollar basis, when you look at the rent levels on a Section 18 unit, which is what you see here, under 90% of small area FMR, these numbers here, compared to what you get on a RAB unit, you can see that they're significantly higher, right? So when you do the calculation, I've done three calculations for you here. We had talked about 20% RAB and 80% Section 18 that we talked about on the last meeting that, that the New York Housing Authority is doing a 90/10 blend. So I calculated that out. And then this last one is if we do 100% Section 18 and leave out the rent components. And you can see here that the annual rent collection, you know, the differences between them. It's not actually that on a portfolio of the size. It is not that substantial between doing 100% Section 18 or 90/10 blend. And then what that translates into is how much money you can borrow, which is this row here. And you can see that doing 100% Section 18 allows the housing authority on Andrew Jackson to borrow 12 million more dollars than they could if we did a 90/10 blend. And 14 more million dollars if we did a 90/10 versus a 20/80. The cost of building a new unit in Hoboken is really, really high. I think it's over $400,000 a unit. So in the grand scheme of things, 12 million dollars when we're looking at, you know, a $400 million deal is not that significant. So I wanted to lay out the numbers for you. So the next thing we look at is, okay, so everybody knows that RAB or a RAB Section 18 blend comes with a very robust set of resident rights. And that's important to everybody. So we have to compare these key features of the RAB and the RAB blend to 100% Section 18. So here I've captured what we're going to talk about in the subsequent slides. So we don't need to go into detail here. But the first thing we're going to talk about is affordability and the difference between the two programs. So in a RAB Section 18 blend, the RAB units are affordable into perpetuity. So if we do 10% RAB units, what that means is we execute at closing a RAB use agreement. It's an affordability agreement that also has attached to it a non-RAB PBB write-off. So for the 90% of the units or 80% of the units, which applies to those, the RAB units will be affordable for the remainder of their existing useful remaining life. The non-RAB units, the 90 or 80% of the units, they have to be affordable for the, at least the next 40 years. So you can see that the blend comes with a very strict affordability requirement. On the 100% Section 18 side, you are required to execute a Section 18 use agreement. Typically, it's 30 years. But actually, there's no.
Can we keep it down in the back, please?
There's no requirement for it to be 30. So HJA could elect for it to be longer than that. And what we see a lot of times is that often the use agreement matches the term of the grant lease, which is what is going to happen when we execute these transactions. So it could be 75 to 99 years that the use agreement would require that the units be rented to folks at 80% of AMI or below. The next thing we're going to talk about is the capital needs requirements. So when you do a RAB. So when you do a RAD conversion, whether it's a 20-80 blend or a 10-90 blend, HUD requires you to do a specific HUD RAD RPCA. And you have to establish what the needs of the property are for the next 20 years. And then you have to fund the dollars for whatever those repairs are for the next 20 years. So HUD really does do a good job of overseeing to make sure that the Housing Authority has set aside enough funding to take care of the physical needs of these new projects or substantially renovated projects for the next 20 years. If you go with the Section 18 side, whether you do a 90-10 blend or 100% Section 8, it does require what Mark referenced earlier, which is an obsolescence physical need study. And really, what that means is we have to prove to HUD that it's silly to repair these buildings when the cost of it is excessive. And the best thing to do is to tear them down and to rebuild them. So that's what an obsolescence study does. It's very different from a RAD PCNA. If we opt for the 90-10 blend, I don't want to get into technicalities here, but we'd actually have to do both for policy reasons. So that's the difference between the physical needs. On the Section 18 side, if you do 100% Section 18, HUD does not require you to establish a reserve replacement account. But that is something that we, Enterprise, strongly advises any housing authority to do when they go through the Section 18 program, is to make sure that that account is set up and established. So resident rights. In any kind of RAD blend, 80, 20, 90, 10, the robust set of resident rights comes along with it. So in a RAD conversion or a blend, every resident has the right to return. You've heard this a million times. Has the right to return to the same phase that they originally lived in, okay? In 100% Section 18, it doesn't mandate the right to return, but you can see that I put a double asterisk there. And that means that Hoboken Housing Authority adopted a set of development principles that I think you're familiar with. They're posted on Hoboken's website. The board's very familiar with them. So there are certain resident rights that aren't required, but that HHA has voluntarily chosen to adopt. So they are going to tell you, despite what avenue they choose, that every resident has the right to return to the phase that they originally lived in. The next one is a rent phase-in. So there are lots of, lots of, but there are a substantial amount of folks living in the Hoboken public housing units that pay what we call a flat rent. And that means they're probably not yet paying 30% of their income towards rent, which is what the majority of folks living in the units do pay. So when you do a RAD or a RAD blend, Hoboken is allowed to phase those folks in to an increase so that eventually they're paying 30% of their income towards rent. And that can be over to a three- to five-year period, which is very helpful in certain situations. If you choose 100% Section 18, we're not allowed to do that. The reason is the RAD program was able to waive a lot of the regulations. And under 100% Section 18, those regulations are not waived. So if you were a flat renter, you would automatically have to jump up to paying 30% of your income towards rent. The next one is over-income families. So in a RAD or a RAD blend, any family that is over the income limit for Section 8 is allowed to stay, and we can keep that unit on our housing assistance Section 8 contract. When you do 100% Section 18, that's not necessarily the case. Although Hoboken has agreed, because every resident has the right to return despite their income level, that they will talk to those residents and negotiate some contract rent that they would pay going forward. So we're not going to be kicking anybody out because of their income. Just making the distinction between that RAD has an automatic protection for that. The next category is over-housed families. So during this whole process, HHA will make an effort to what we call right-sizing families, which means that we put families in the units that HUD regulations allow. A lot of families might be in a unit that has too many bedrooms for the number of folks in the household. For instance, a one-person family in a two-bedroom unit. In a RAD or a RAD blend, those folks are protected. HUD says we have to make efforts to put them in right-sized units, but if those right-sized units are not available, that's okay. They can stay where they are until a right-sized unit becomes available. On the 100% Section 18 side, we can't do that. So an over-housed family would have to, upon conversion and going into their new unit, they have to be in a right-sized unit. There's no exceptions to that. Resident procedural rights. So in a RAD or a RAD blend, the provisions around notifications to residents and termination, grievance procedures, all of those get carried over into the new Section 8 lease. That is not required in 100% Section 18, but HHA has elected to do that. That's one of the things that they can say. All right, you're doing it in RAD, we'll do it in 100% Section 18 as well. Resident participation and funding, again, that is required under RAD and a blend. It is something that is not required under 100% Section 18, but that HHA has elected to also provide. And the last thing is choice mobility. So when we talk about Section 8, a lot of folks have in their head Section 8 vouchers. Here, both programs are the same. Once a resident signs a Section 8 lease post-conversion and they're living there for 12 months, both programs say that if you would like to move somewhere else, you have the ability to go to the Section 8 leasing office and request a mobile voucher, at which point you go to the top of the waiting list. And if there is an available voucher, you will be notified. So there's a lot that I just talked about. I don't expect you to soak it all in tonight. And as Mark said, you know, we can get these slides out to everybody so you can think about it and maybe come up with some questions. Public stewardship is another strong component of RAD and a RAD blend. So under this, HUD requires that a converted property must be controlled or owned by a public entity or a nonprofit entity. There is an exception for tax credit properties, which is what these will be. We're going to do a tax credit conversion. And so the exception here is that the property can be controlled by a for-profit entity, has to be in order to get the tax credits. But the property must be controlled by a public or nonprofit entity. And so that is satisfied a couple of different ways. A long-term GRAD lease, which is what we'll do here. And also that the Housing Authority has a controlling interest and the ownership entity is able to make decisions as things move forward. On the 100% Section 18 side, it's not a requirement. It can be sold to a for-profit entity, and Hoboken would not necessarily have to have control. But again, double asterisks here. HHA is going to elect and will mandate, won't negotiate unless they have control going into the Section 8 conversion. Preservation, I think this is our last slide. Oh, no, relocation's next. So preservation, what that means is under RAD or a blend, HUD requires that Housing Authority replace every unit of public housing with a unit of Section 8 subsidized housing. Okay, it's called one-for-one replacement. In 100% Section 18, that's not required. There is no, you could tear down a building and not have to replace the units. I didn't put the double asterisks here, but in the development principles, HHA has promised that they will do a one-for-one replacement. So for every unit of public housing that exists now, they will replace it with a unit of Section 8. Relocation. So under a blend, the Uniform Relocation Act applies. There's a lot of rules and regulations that go with the URA, Uniform Relocation Act. Every resident has the right to return to the phase of the development that they were living in originally. And if they don't return to that phase, for whatever reason, maybe they decide they're going to go somewhere else or they would prefer to live in a different part of Hoboken's housing, then they have to actually sign a form that says they relinquished their right to return to the original phase that they came from. All relocation expenses are paid for. That goes for whether it's RAD blend or 100% Section 18. Under 100% Section 18, again, residents don't necessarily have the right to return to the same phase. So if you started at Christopher Columbus and ended up at Andrew Jackson, that's okay in HUD's eyes. The Housing Authority is required to offer all residents comparable replacement housing. URA doesn't necessarily apply here, but the regulations are very similar. And again, all of the relocation expenses are paid for. Tenant protection vouchers. Okay, so when we do a RAD Section 18 blend, on the RAD units, you know, either the 10% or the 20%, whatever we elect, the Section 8 funding is automatic for those units. Doesn't matter if they're vacant. Housing Authority doesn't have to do anything to get that Section 8 funding. It comes automatically. On the remainder of the units that we're calling Section 18 units, the Housing Authority is going to have to apply for Section 8 funding. And currently, HUD is only providing the funding for units that are occupied at the time that the conversion happens. In a RAD Section 18 blend, the Housing Authority must project base all of the tenant protection vouchers. So in essence, it becomes, the Housing Authority takes all of this funding from HUD, and they have to put project-based assistance on the units that stays with the units. On the 100% Section 18 side, the Housing Authority has to apply for all of the Section 8 funding. And again, they're only providing funding for occupied units. The Housing Authority also has the option under 100% Section 18 of giving tenant protection vouchers directly to the residents for mobility purposes, to move somewhere else or to project-base the subsidy. That is up to the Housing Authority. Project basing those tenant protection vouchers will preserve the unit and allows the Housing Authority to actually leverage more debt to do all of the new construction or the substantial rehab. And so at this point, now that I've confused everybody thoroughly, I've been doing this for a long time, so it's not so confusing to me, but I can imagine that I just provided a lot of information. So I'm going to stop sharing and see if there's any questions that I might be able to answer. And if not, like, if you need to digest it all, please make sure that you give questions either to the board or to Mark and his team. And they can, you know, email those to me, and I can give you answers that we will definitely get back to you with.
Thank you, Shannon. A very nice presentation. We will have your presentation up on our website, and we will have paper copies available at Central Office starting tomorrow afternoon. So if anyone wants a copy of the presentation, we'd be glad to give you one or email one to you if you drop me an email. So we'll have Shannon's presentation available to you. And I'll just say again, we'll be discussing this a lot over the next few months. As I said before, we're expecting a special board meeting in October that I think will be getting closer to making the final decision on this. But having said those things, I'll kind of hush and let other folks answer and ask questions. While Shannon's with us.
Guys, do you have any questions?
Shannon, I'm wondering, we've been working on this for two or three years now, and we're nowhere. You know, you were, the enterprise people were very good. The non-enterprise people created no excitement. The architect designed buildings that looked like a modern set of projects, not beautiful buildings. So my concern is, when are we going to carefully schedule architects, somebody in the office who will run the program? Are we going to get nine or four credits? Nine percent or four percent credits, which will make a huge difference in our financing? I'm not sure if we can get the nine percent credit in New Jersey. But what we need to do is go forward with the schedule, and we have to assign dates that we're going to achieve certain things because we haven't.
So I'm not sure that we haven't achieved milestones. I do agree that things took longer than we had anticipated. But we're in a really great spot right now in terms of the board, you know, all being on the same page with each other and in a position where we've got a plan to move forward. So I think it was in the last meeting that we put up a timeline of things that we were going, or maybe it was even the meeting before that, I can't remember. But happy to recirculate that. So as Mark pointed out, one of the next steps that we're working on is getting the obsolescence studies engaged because that's a big decision-making point in what we've talked about tonight. Also, the city plays a big role in this. And so we have been working with the city to move forward with the MOU and to get the area designated as a redevelopment area, which is a very important part of this whole process. And so in partnership with the city, we'll start working through that timeline. We can't, one or the other... We can't, one of the other things that is critical is to get the legal team on board that will take you guys through this process. So we're in, had several discussions about, with HUD, about procuring that legal counsel. I'm very happy with the results of where that's going. And we're also going to, you know, in terms of, we're going to start working on putting together an RFP for a development partner, but the city has some say in all of that and we can't quite get there until we've moved through some other steps with the city to procure a redevelopment partner.
Shannon, I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt you. What exactly are those steps that you think we need to, the city needs to take before we could start doing that?
So somebody from the city can probably answer that way better than I can. But my understanding is that we're working on a memorandum of understanding about what our role is, Housing Authority versus the city.
Right.
Once that's executed, then we're going to be, they hired an engineer to do the study to determine whether or not we can be in an area of redevelopment, which is also a big part of this. So things are moving forward that way. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong about that.
No, I think you're accurate in saying that. I just don't want, so from my perspective, and of course I have a unique perspective being on both sides of the transaction here, right? From the city's perspective and from the Housing Authority's perspective. I don't want us as an authority to get bogged down on what the city needs to do, because the city is doing that, right? We had Councilman Ramos, I don't know if he's still here, he was here earlier, he spoke about it briefly. We have our head of housing here at the meeting. We are, again, from the city's perspective, we are making sure that that happens and happens as quickly as possible. I don't want to get into a situation where we're waiting on the city and then the city's waiting on us and then nothing happens. So I think Aaron's correct in saying that the concern here is the timeline and the things that we need to do. So I just don't want, again, I just don't want to get caught in that, oh, we're waiting for the city, and then the city turns around and says, oh, we're waiting for the Housing Authority, right?
Yeah.
So like I said, I'm in a unique position to make sure that doesn't happen and I just don't want us to get bogged down.
Yeah, and absolutely. So communication obviously is very important here. Yeah, I don't anticipate that we're going to get bogged down in any way in terms of the architectural pieces of this and the drawings and all of that. That will really progress once the development partner is on board. So, you know, I'm going to say we're probably six months out from bringing in a development partner here. It's probably one of the most critical decisions that the Housing Authority will make. And so once, I can guarantee you, because I've been on a lot of deals where we bring it, you know, getting to the development partner takes a long time, but once the development partner's on board, things start flying, you know, because they're just as eager as the Housing Authority to get the ball rolling and then heads start spinning. So I'm going to say, you know, within six months.
Why do you think that timeline is six months?
Just from my understanding about the city process and putting out an RFP for a development partner has to be vetted, you know, we'll get, I'm pretty sure we're going to get quite a few good responses for that.
Right.
And then there's a negotiation process that goes on with that development partner. It's called, you're negotiating the master development agreement.
Right.
Which spells out all the terms of the financial components of the deal, the timeline, what exactly is going to happen. My experience with that has been that it's taken a couple months to get through that process with attorneys, et cetera.
Shannon, can you explain what the development partner is responsible for?
Yeah, well typically, most of, in the deals that I've worked on, the development partner is the one in collaboration with the Housing Authority. So there's not just, there's not just a development partner, there's also the Housing Authority. They're a team. And so they work to build the whole development team, including the architect, you know, the general contractor, all of the third parties that are involved in pulling this all together. That is what the development partner will do. They also put up all the financial guarantees related to this, which are substantial. And they will set the timeline and they really are the driving force behind the redevelopment. They'll be in charge of doing relocation, management, figuring out who's going to manage the property going forward. It's a very complex situation. Not that it can't be done, because it's been done, you know, over and over again, but it really is a process and you don't want to rush through this first part of it, because you absolutely have to have everything wind up and the right partner in place in order to be successful. And this first building or set of buildings, phase one, has to be, you know, has to be an ace. So it's really important that we take the time to make sure this goes right.
Thanks. So just quickly, Shannon, I mean, I know there's some big decisions that we have to make. I think the first, as you said, the first phase of this is, it really has to come off almost perfectly. But we still have to figure out how that's going to affect the phasing of the entire project, what other properties are involved. And I know the answer is yes, but how prudent is it to have multiple development partners for multiple sites? Because I think that helps with the phasing and the timing so that we can, in essence, get our residents into the housing that they deserve. Why would we want to prolong that process for six months in your estimation if in fact we could get those RFPs completed and ready and start voting on that at our next, you know, meeting, following meeting, whatever it may be? I want to kind of run this whole process on multiple parallel tracks to increase the timeline and increase the phasing, but doing that respectfully and doing that as prudently as possible.
Yeah, so I think the Housing Authority's open to multiple development partners. It's always been the case. You know, this does have to happen in phases as has been outlined in the strategic plan that was presented. They're really, because of the situation of having to build a building first and then relocate people into that building, because of a very low vacancy within the city, there's just not anywhere to put people. So it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to hire multiple development partners out of the gate. You can put out an RFQ and a request for qualifications and bring in a bunch of folks and know that there's, you know, be talking to multiple development partners at the same But in reality, we can only really be working on one phase at a time unless something opens up, unless, you know, we find a parcel of land, you know, that we have, that now we can do parallel tracks. It's not the case right now.
But Shannon...
But that's not to say that won't happen down the road. You know, that would be a great thing.
What about our senior buildings? There's no relocation needed for those two additions?
Yeah, there is. The amount of rehabilitation that has to go on for those senior properties requires for them to be relocated out of their unit for, I don't know what the timeline is.
Full vacancy? Do we need full vacancy in our senior buildings to do the additions?
To do, rehab to the existing sites.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking about the additional portion of the building that we're building. We don't necessarily need relocation to start that process, correct?
I don't know that that was part of the strategic plan, to build additions onto those buildings.
Yeah, we do anticipate some additions on our elderly disabled buildings, but that plan doesn't work unless you're doing the whole building at one time. If you're looking back at that plan, if you're going to move the folks out of this building over to another building, then we come in and gut this building and do the addition at the same time, it won't help us a heck of a lot to just build 20 units or 30 units out there, brand new units, it's not going to help. We're still not going to have enough space there to do a whole new section of our buildings. I think as we move forward, we can certainly relook at the plan and have some conversations about that, Councilman. But at this point, as we look at it, I don't see how that would significantly jumpstart.
Right.
I think Shannon's idea that if we can find another parcel of land, for example, something larger where you can build those 70 units or 80 units, now we're talking, right? Now we're talking about jumpstarting, maybe doing the parallel. Again, that's just knee-jerk, but I think that's where we could get real on some type of a jumpstart on parallel track.
Well, at the very least, I think we should do at least the RFQs to pull those people in, to kind of line people up so that when we can pull the trigger for multiple partners, we can. Again, I don't, I want to try for us as the authority to have our professionals in place, have the partners in place, and really keep this ball rolling. You know, like I said, I mean, the city side of it, we'll deal with on the city, but from our perspective, I want to make sure we're doing everything in our power to keep this ball rolling quickly.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, we're just as eager as everybody else to see something happen here. And, yeah, I just want to reiterate that this is a very reiterative process, right? So just because we have some concept today doesn't mean that that can't change over time. And this is going to be a long process, no matter how we slice and dice it. Hopefully we can shorten it if there are other opportunities, but it's going to keep changing, right? Because, for multiple reasons, and we just have to be open to that and really take advantage of any opportunity that comes up. But yeah, absolutely, the RFQ that goes out for development partners, it's going to take a while to actually get that RFQ put together, not months and months, but, you know, you want it to reflect what the Housing Authority really wants and what their priorities are and so that you don't get folks responding that are on a completely different page. But again, I think it's exciting, there's people, I'm sure there'll be lots of developers very eager to respond and we'll have a whole host of folks. Yeah.
It's good that this is coming up, because I had mentioned in my report that we were anticipating with our team of having maybe a special board meeting early in October. Maybe we can talk about pushing that up into September sometime so we can really spend an hour or two getting back, open up the strategic plan and see where we are. Because we want to push this thing as fast as we can.
Yeah, and we also talked about having additional resident meetings in September.
Right, so we'd have those on a parallel track. So we'll see if we can pull those together.
So I guess my question to you, Shannon, and you, Director, is do we need to make any significant decisions about funding for some of those other things to happen as far as getting the attorneys and the other professionals that we need? Do we need to make the decision of a RAG, Section 18 blend versus we don't need that decision right away to do that?
Not to hire an attorney, no, you don't need that. You're really looking for a legal team that specializes in public housing redevelopment so that crosses all, you know, they'll know everything. Section 18, RAG, doesn't matter.
So the draft MOA that we have, we could vote on that. Once the professionals look at it, finalize that draft, we could vote on that. Like, these are all things that we can do before we make a decision about funding, before we make a decision about development partners, and those are the things that I want to make sure we are doing, because then, you know, the city's not waiting on us, we're waiting on the city, right?
Yeah, we can be on our own track in terms of, so the reason the legal team comes first is because they are going to be key to helping the Housing Authority put out the RFQ for the development partner, right? And also to vet the folks that come in and negotiate the master development agreement. You can't, the Housing Authority can't do it on their own. They need someone who's seen this over and over again and has the Housing Authority's best interests at heart. And so that's really the first critical step here. At the same time, we're going to be pulling the trigger on the obsolescence studies just to see, you know, whether or not we can do the 90-10 blend.
Okay.
So that obsolescence study, before we go after the development partner, is needed. The area in need of redevelopment needs to be in before the development partner, the MOU and the legal team, and those are all things we're working on. So we're going to keep pushing on those.
Awesome.
So we're set when we're ready to go.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Great job. And thank you for it. No, no, great, these are absolutely things we need to be doing now.
We need more knowledge.
Anything else on that? And again, Shannon's presentation will be available to all of us tomorrow.
All right, so is there any other questions or am I free to go?
If you don't have dinner now, I think you're good.
All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Well, you don't want to wait, you can just hang out and watch.
No, thanks.
You're all maddened.
Directly, can we make sure that we email those to the entire board?
Yes, those will be emailed to the entire board and to anyone who wants to drop me an email, text, call, we'll make sure you get one by whatever form you want and we'll also print a bunch of extras down at the office.
Thank you.
You said you received the MOA, right?
Yes, yes. Just received the MOA. Oh, yeah, I sent the draft MOA out too. Harold is cranking away on that one right now. So to continue my report, security policing issues, the security contract for HUD, the security contract is not HUD for approval for the security guards, that came up as a question earlier, but we're not waiting. In anticipation of that, we have an apparent contractor, so we're meeting with that contractor, as a matter of fact, tomorrow morning, to start planning on, as soon as that contract gets back to us from HUD, that we're immediately entering that contract with them and moving forward. You all have already approved it and so as soon as that gets back from HUD, we'll do our due diligence and get that cranking. Still, as I've said before, we're still looking probably, I'm hoping at this point, mid-September, if not before. But if it hits us, we should be able to have them here working very quickly. We are going to have a round of meet and greets again next month, so we'll see you all in September for our, now it's turned in from every three months, I've turned it into every two months for now, meet and greet round, so we'll be seeing all of the residents during September. We have a couple things on our youth. The Resident Services Committee met, working on a plan with resident volunteers to utilize downtime. I think we're setting up another meeting on that over at Mama Johnson Field. We're looking for, we're going to be looking for folks that might want to be over at Mama Johnson monitoring the field while it's open. If we have no other programs running there, it's not the city's time and we don't have an official program, we just want to open the gates and be able to have free time play, but we need a monitor there. So we're opening to people, open to people that want to come in and partner up with us. We have been running our community basketball league. We have been running our community basketball league since the 22nd of July, expected to run through August 27th. We do have a Housing for Hoboken affiliate that has run a GoFundMe campaign. To date, we have received correction in my report 2028, we've now received 2,780. We actually got a $500 donation today. So my heartfelt thanks to all that have contributed and worked on this project, it's been really successful. I encourage any resident that wishes to meet with me personally to schedule an appointment through their manager's office. Residents, reach out to Ms. Lourdes at our central office, leave a note in our mailbox, you know, "Mr. Recko, we want to meet with you." Whichever form you can give with us, we'll schedule you in. I do run on meetings, I live by meetings, so we need to schedule and have you in. If you do just walk in, you'd be very lucky to catch me, but if you do, we'll meet with you. But it's kind of hard to do it that way. We've made many intake meetings over the past month, and our management staff's ready to serve you if needed. The Hoboken Police Department continues to be very responsive to our situation. Regular patrols, I think we've all seen the police presence on our developments over the past few months. Again, thank you, we've got some officers that may be hiding behind the column from me that were here, but thank you for everything you're doing and meeting with us on a regular basis. A number of significant drug-related arrests have been made over the last couple months, they have been out there working. In tandem with that, we've followed up with our attorneys, we're taking a number of court actions against leaseholders, some of which have already been successful, by the way. And when we have that preponderance of evidence that they've been involved in violent or drug-related activities, we can take action. Our communities, our camera system continues to be a valuable tool for us and the Hoboken Police Department. So we appreciate that investment that the boards made in our camera systems, they really do work. We are very thankful for residents that have come forward to identify individuals, we need proof in order to move. So anytime we can have evidence of a particular thing that happens, please keep in touch with us. Again, if you see something happen at 10 o'clock tonight, get with your manager, give us that information so we can go back and check our cameras, we can get the evidence we need. I know it's frightening sometimes for folks to individually testify, even anonymous testifying helps. If you're not anonymous, it helps even more, because we're always in front of a judge in the end to talk about what evidence we have to take in action against a resident. So please keep in touch with us. We need to do this together, it works when we're together. Ms. Shaw in Policy and Outreach has working on something that's going to be great news to Erica. We anticipate applying for funds to begin a family self-sufficiency program, knock on wood. Wait till we get it. For the first time in recent memory, HUD's notice of funding on this actually said the magic words, "Please, if you have a new program, apply." They haven't done that in years. So they've refunded old programs, and this time, when it hit the streets about two weeks ago, they said new programs will be funded under this round, so we're going to put an application, the applications do in October, so we have a little time to put it together, but we will go after that very hard, because an FSS program would be great for us. We are developing a resident handbook for each of our sites, and a new newsletter will be hitting the streets for you shortly. It will be on the website, and for the first time, we're doing a paper edition. Our second edition is now being translated into Spanish, and once that's done, we'll be ready to hit, so it should hit, I would think, in the next week or so. Thanks to all for our special board meeting on August 1st, the resolutions for the approval of the ACOP revision and the Drug Abuse and Criminal Activity Policy is in front of you tonight. COVID-19 continues to affect us. We've had a number of staff being out over the past two weeks due to COVID issues and forced to quarantine. We continue to follow the most current CDC guidelines in dealing with safety measures, and we'll continue to do that as we go into the future. We just need to hope this thing goes away someday. Weekend on staffing, we continue to search for an additional plumber to bring onto our maintenance staff. We are looking at the possibility now of contracting out a qualified purchasing agent for Emmel's crew, and we're working with the enterprise partners right now to review our staffing organization. They have some recommendations on redoing our staffing for now and into the future, and we're working on those now. We should be able to get to you within the next couple meetings on some recommendations for reorganizing our staff. Fox Hill Gardens, the renovation contracts are in process, pre-job meetings have been held. Supply chain issues have affected us greatly here, and I'll mention another one in a little while, but we should be able to get the material in and have repairs begin soon. Housing for Hoboken, we will be back to the board next month with the new Housing for Hoboken trustee recommendations, which we'll get to you as soon as we can. We did have one meeting on it this month, but didn't pull it together to bring to the board this month. Vacancy issues, and I think there was a statement on that earlier, attachment one is the monthly vacancy report. We had six newly used, newly leased units in May, I'm sorry, blew it, didn't change that from the last report. That was in July, and we had six transfers, I concentrated on the numbers. We had four residents vacate their apartment with a 94% occupancy rate as of August 1st, holding study from last month. Of course, our initial goal is 95%, which will put us in line with HUD's position, our overall goal is 98%. Mr. Burton, would you like to comment on our vacancy?
So there's a little portion here, the ready units part?
Can you cover the mic?
There are 23 units that are ready to go right now, but maintenance just handed over keys for, so we're starting them off with 23. What's significant about that number is that those are the 23 units that put us over the top to be at that 96. 54 is our magic number, 54 vacancies, and maybe with 54, we're at 96. So now, with this being said, we have, with today's HUD visits, we look for us because they were able to walk Harrison Gardens with us and see with their own eyes and experience what the stairwells are going through and why it's so difficult to lease up at Harrison Gardens right now. So that'll make it easier for us to get that approval of taking whatever units are in Harrison Gardens off, plus the 23, we'll be way into the 96, which is the number that, 95 is what we need for recording levels, but 96 is what gets us out of trouble status. So right now, I think it's so within the grasp of us, and we're going to put a special team now to go the road out of our trouble status, which we've been in for over eight years.
So can I ask a question that I think everybody's thinking about?
Yes.
How fast will we get those 23 units leased up now that they're ready to go?
So historically, what we've been doing is whatever duties they give us, every month they give you the report, we've been leasing up pretty much anything that's ready at the time. So now we have 23 new units, so knock on wood, we should be next month when they come here, they should be down.
We hope to have them done this month.
Correct. And already of those, there's at least 10 that have already leased up that didn't count in this report, they weren't moving into August, and you guys are looking at July's report. So already some of them are already occupied, so.
So I'm going to hold you to it?
Yeah. And the whole point is that.
We're going to hold your pay if not.
Let's do it. But the whole point is, it's not even just that, this is like historical.
I get it.
It's like, when we get to that point.
I think everybody's patiently waiting to get to that point, and I think we're right there, so.
And we've done about 150 units this year.
Correct. And since.
Which is amazing.
So if all goes well and that 23 is totally leased up, what would our number be as far as vacancies now?
Well, we should, the magic number that we want to cross is 54. 54 is our number that puts us at 96. So we want to see less than 54 vacancies, then we're in the money.
So if we lease up all 23, what will we be at? We'll be at 54, exactly?
We'll be at 55.
Okay, that's fine.
Right.
All right.
55, exactly. Right now, and I think Councilman Raymon's mentioned that somebody was saying we had 200 units? No, 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 no.
Well, and that's why I asked the question, so it's.
We've got 78 vacancies, as of August 1st, we have 78 vacancies. If we lease only those 23, we're down to 55, and we may well beat that at that point. And in any group that you have here, you're going to have, we at any time are going to have anywhere from 40 to 50 vacancies, just naturally. With 1,300 units, you're going to have about that many. We want to beat that.
Sure.
But you're going to have about that many on average in property management, so if we can get down to that 55, we're in great shape.
Those 55, are they still waiting to be renovated, or are they just in general?
Awesome question. So as they just handed you the 23, we jumped into the next set, and really what's left untouched is 40.
Okay.
So the last 40, there's crews in 13, 14 apartments that they're going to finish in, 40 is what's completely intact as of right now.
Thank you.
So once we reach our goal, does that mean that that's it, we're going to stop?
Oh, no, 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 that just means we hit a milestone in HUD's eyes that takes us out of trouble status.
Okay, okay, so then we'll continue to rent and lease up those with the individuals on the waiting list?
Absolutely.
And once those units are rehabbed and ready to go, that frees up some staff to start dealing with some of the other issues that we're having right in the day-to-day?
You hit it on the head. So the vacancy is like part one. That train is moving and is headed towards the station, but really, really, and what, and I'm glad we have all our managers here tonight, so thank you for being here. And the point is, we're in the process right now of special training, we're going to go over in the next four weeks. We started, Matt has sat in with us for the first meeting, he's going to be with us at the end for any questions. The real goal here is to put a team in place to start working on this tenant, outstanding rents, and recertifications, because until we fix that, that's as big, in people's eyes, vacancy is the biggest problem, that is a big problem, but recertification and tenure rent, that's how we stay in business. So we need to stay in business, that's the next focus.
Great.
Thank you. And thanks to your crew for working so hard on this.
I have one more question.
Yes, sure, sure.
So now that more units are going to be rented and leased up and so forth, are we ever thinking about getting more maintenance? And I'm just asking.
Right now, we're essentially running a break-even budget, essentially. So it's really a matter of can we collect our excess rent, can we bring more income into the housing authority? And my job over the past five years has been to increase our reserves as much as possible. We haven't significantly increased them, we've held steady, and we've increased a bit, but we can't go into a deficit spending situation every year. So the answer is yes, we take a quick, we take a good look at it, we think we have a couple spots we can get. I mentioned earlier, we're looking at a new plumbing position, which we think is crucial. Probably 70%, sadly, 75% of our work orders, issues? 75% are plumbing, plumbing issues? Yeah, yeah, and time, broken stacks, broken supplies, so that new good, solid, master-type plumber is crucial, so we're looking at that as a first step. We can't break the budget at any given year, but we think we can make some improvements there, some more staff.
Even if it's hiring part-timers?
Well, you know, that's always, if we can find, if we run across somebody that's talented, that can actually help.
We're looking for someone with athletes with these buildings, the way and fighting system, that is minimal changes.
If somebody wants to come in part-time, we grab them. I mean, we grab them, without a doubt, yeah.
And the other thing is that like, we've come into a security guard contract that we weren't anticipating, so that is costing us $187,000. And that's something that, like, we found the money for it, but it wasn't necessarily like, so that's coming out of our reserves, Mr. Recko.
Right. There's always that decision, and that was a crucial decision, but you're always weighing those things. We do have our request in to bring on the local carpenter's unit as well over with HUD, and we keep pushing them for a final decision on that. We had another meeting with HUD on that topic this week, they want some more paper from us, so we're providing them more paper. Special capital projects, the JHMFA project is really approaching completion, we've really only got the Adams Garden Boiler Project going on, and the very last of the Harrison Courtyard going on right now. So those are really the two projects that are getting finished under there. We hope to be done with the courtyard within the next couple weeks, I think we'll be completely done. The Adams Garden is another supply chain issue, we're waiting for a condensate return tank that's taking forever to get here, and when that's done, we'll be able to wrap up that project, which has been, what, 18 months we've been working on this project? The emergency generator project that you approved last month, the infrastructure will start soon, but an emergency generator under that contract will take nine months to arrive for the generator, nine months. So those won't be completed until the spring. The contractor can do the infrastructure, pour the pads, get all that ready, but unfortunately, I had fell off my chair, I thought we'd be done in a couple months, but supply chain issues are out there. Once that project is complete, only Andrew Jackson North will be without updated generators. These generators in this phase are going to see CG in Adams, and once that's done, the only section of all of our sites without new emergency generators will be Andrew Jackson North, and we should be able to bid those under capital funds next year, so as spring comes. Special thank you to the city for once again funding us under CDBG program, thank you, city. We were just awarded 2022 CDBG funds in the amount of $627,927. Thank you, city. In that budget, there's $300,000 for our boiler replacements, $50,000 for lighting upgrades, and $279,000 for security enhancements. We're still working on getting the Duco Kid boilers at each site, we need lighting throughout the authority, so we're going to be able to significantly upgrade our lighting, and the security enhancements are really crucial right now. Our camera systems have switches, complicated switches in every building that a system's in. They are old, they are getting up, they are obsolete, actually obsolete, past their use for life, and our consultant is very clear with us that we better get those things replaced. And so we're going to use that money to replace those infrastructure systems. Who's our consultant? A fellow named Dan Aloya, his company name, Emel? I always say Dan.
Emel?
HUD Unified Technology Consultants.
Thank you.
And he's been like, he's been very helpful with the city and the police department in whatever like needs that they've needed. So he's been a great partner for us.
I'm glad Sergeant Collins is speaking his side.
Isn't that true, Sergeant?
All day.
Yeah.
They'll answer at 2:00 in the morning if those cameras go down, and we'll work right on it.
Thank you.
I get it, officer.
And he knows our system like the back of his hand, he really does. Welcome, Sergeant, good to see you. I didn't see him earlier, I've been busy working, I've been busy talking to these people. 2021, last year's CDBG funds are under design, mostly dedicated to boiler work, and may be combined with this new boiler work that we got this year. We're administering the 2020 CDBG funds, the only work left on that is to finish that generator contract that, we're going to take nine months to get the actual generator. So once that's done, our 2020 CDBG funds are completely spent. Management report. Management report, we've essentially agreed, well, we have agreed with our management department of three major initiatives and goals for the coming year. We need to achieve and maintain that 96% occupancy rate at the very least, achieve a 95% or better score in HUD's pick system. What that means is the reporting on our occupancy as well as reporting and completion of all of our recertifications over time. So we want to achieve a 95% or better on that.
What was the last year?
We were, do you know off the top of your head?
It changes every month, Andrew. And right now, we have the most historically low number. November here is 78, our pick number. 95 is like the lowest number. We held steady at 88 for a little while. This has to do directly with people not complying with recertification. So, so we called them, we sent them a letter, we say, and now that's part of what we're working with Matt on the notices, because now they're gonna start, the managers have sent out the notices saying, listen, if you don't recertify, you're gonna get evicted. Didn't do anything. Now they're gonna come out letterhead from the attorney's office, and that's, that's what's gonna be the big push. Unfortunately, for whatever reason during COVID, people clearly felt that they could stop paying rent and recertify. That was never the case.
Can we, I don't see any, we don't get a monthly report on what we're talking about with rents, collecting rents. Is it, can we start putting that into?
Sure.
Monthly?
Sure.
So we can start seeing, you know, how much money is owed?
Absolutely.
Because the software was, you've mentioned that software is a key component to that. We fixed that issue. So let's start to see if that's actually.
Absolutely.
Gonna start bringing in more money.
Because that's gonna be a major initiative this year.
And, and part of it is, we're gonna start setting those goals. That's what this training is about, is about setting, just like we said, okay, we're trying to get at least 10, 15 apartments leased up every month. The next phase is gonna be, we wanna get 30, 40 families each, each month to come off of the outstanding rent and maybe pass it over into either repayment agreement, something that moves over to the repayment counts in a different way. So if we can start to do that, so yes, being able to see those numbers every month is important.
So you just said, you just said 30 to 40 families, right? Is that, that's the goal?
That's the goal, to get interns to repay us.
So can we now chart that each month?
Sure.
That'd be good.
And that would start after we finish the process with Matt, because we wanna do that uniformly.
When's that, when's that finished?
What we're shooting for is for September 1st. Hopefully, if we can get it done, if not, then it will be October.
Well, let's, let's start tracking it anyway.
No, 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 I can give you the numbers.
Even knowing that it's not starting until September, but I, I think Andrew's right in, in the sense of, we wanna see it too, because then we can keep everybody accountable as well.
I have a question. Are you, there was a letter you were putting with hopes for people needing assistance. Did you put that in the letter?
We have not gotten to that, but he did put that at the bottom of his goals.
So that's part of the push, essentially drafts are with Frank. And then one that we're talking about is essentially training the staff. It's getting the staff ready to deal with the onslaught of hopefully recertifications and requests for repayment agreements. I think essentially, the paperwork is ready to go. It's preparing everybody to make sure we're on the same page and we're prepared to deal with it when it comes.
It's probably gonna have to include.
I don't, I don't like that word drafts. You talked about a lot of drafts here tonight. There's no voting, there's no moving things forward. Let's go.
I, I am ready to go. Since Frank says they're going out, they're ready to go.
Is the education in that letter saying, letting people know that they have to pay their rent from COVID? Because I think a lot of people think they don't, like it's, oh, yeah, we didn't have to pay it, it just evaporates, but you have to pay the rent.
Part of the idea here is to put systems in place going forward so that this doesn't become an issue. And everybody, staff, everybody may, is better equipped to deal with this going forward and to have it be more easily trackable and something that frankly, staff doesn't even have to think about. Like, okay, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, this needs to be done. So that's part of it. But also, part of it is at the beginning here, yes, there are going to be, there's a notice going out saying, okay, here's the amount you owe. Just because COVID happened doesn't mean that you don't owe this amount. If you have to come in and recertify, it'll make clear that there could be adjustments to income, and just because you didn't report it, doesn't mean you're not responsible for it. So yes, there basically is a first opportunity before we're necessarily filing anything with courts to try and say to the residents, all right, let's come in and let's see if we can figure this out. Let's see if we can get us all to a place where even if you're not repaying everything on the spot, you're on a repayment agreement, you're recertified, and we're working towards basically getting you back to where you should have been all along. And if that doesn't work, surely thereafter, the next step would be potential legal filings, things like that. But the first step is to offer everybody the opportunity to come in and try and work it out.
And the rental assistance for the county is up August 31st.
Is there any education? I know that we've been doing some education around this. The city does it, the state does it. Do we need to do more? And how many people are you looking at? Are we, what are the numbers? Like, how many people do we need to?
That goes to what Andrew was asking for, right? So we can track it?
Because if it's, if it's a lot, then maybe we need to look at it a little differently. Because you don't want to, I'm thinking from the resident's perspective, you want to, of course, we have to collect the money, but you don't want to scare somebody either. So maybe if you was working together and some education around it, come in, we're not scary, sit down with us, talk to us, we'll come up with a plan that works, that's beneficial for everybody. Please don't hide.
Yes.
Because hiding is only gonna cause, make it worse.
And that's part of the discussion we had the other day. And my advice to Frank is that the housing authority should have a real set of guidelines in terms of these repayment agreements. For example, how long are we willing to go? Are we willing to go 12 months, 24 months, whatever? And coming up with a set of guidelines so that everybody's treated fairly. And when people come in, everybody's given the same guidelines and say, okay, we're willing to work with you, here's what we're willing to do, let's see if we can find something that works for your situation.
But it's only been since May, May or, you could start even collecting rent. We couldn't even collect rent by law, right? And there was like a certain month?
So there was a moratorium on filing eviction cases. I mean, you could still correct, collect it. And there have been notices that have gone out during pandemic saying, you know, just as a reminder, you're still responsible for paying your rent. But there haven't been non-payment eviction files.
I'm kind of piggybacking back on what Erica was saying. When she's saying educating, that means that our manager's offices must be open. They must be open to the residents. People have to be able to go in there, speak to your manager. I know personally, Yolanda Sosopo was my manager for so long, and I would refuse to speak to the assistant manager because I had a relationship with her and I could talk to her. She made herself available for me. But I do get a lot of complaints where they're saying the managers don't wanna see them. They don't, so how do you educate? How are you going to get them to feel comfortable enough to come to you and say, this is what I went through, this is what I'm going through? And to be honest, a lot of the times, the residents don't wanna speak to that person that's at the front desk. They wanna speak to their direct manager. And I think the managers and everyone as a staff needs to readily make themselves available to do that for the residents.
Let me ask the question, I'm sorry to interrupt you off. What's the policy, right? What's the internal administrative policy for the, for each of the ends, right?
They first go to their manager. The manager has responsibility to make sure that that problem is addressed. They do have an assistant, but it's their responsibility to make sure it's addressed. If then they can't address it, that manager should be contacting their supervisor, Frank. If that can't happen, it comes to me. So that's clearly it. And Frank, you wanna talk about a little bit what you've talked to the managers? Because I know we've talked about this.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of like in general for any problem that would happen, right? Specifically for what we're talking about now, that's why we wanna spend a whole month of getting the managers ready, getting the offices ready, getting the people ready, really having a solid plan, because it's gonna be like open season. When those, when that batch of letters goes out, the phones are gonna light up, your phones are gonna light up, his phones are gonna light up, because everybody's gonna be like, what do you mean? To your point. Corinne is gonna be part, Corinne's been joining us and is gonna continue to join us in training so that we can put an educational piece to this. That is the most important part. If people know, and like to your point, like the bullet points, listen, you're not going through this alone, we understand, just come to your manager and you'll be able to be afforded the opportunity to enter into a repayment agreement or something like that. Our goal is not to make anybody feel bad. Actually, people who are behind on their rent are stressing out because they know that their rent is late. They don't know how to get over that problem. Entering into a repayment agreement is like hitting the reset button. It's like, okay, I still owe the money, but I don't have to worry, like I know that I'm safe and as long as I make my repayment, that repayment agreement is what's next. And once we have the package already in the letter, I will share with you guys, if you guys kind of wanna have even a special one with us, we just kind of go through that so that that's as much of a component of us being ready for it as, as the management side of it.
And getting the rental assistance has not been any easier for our residents. I know we've worked on it, and I know I've worked with managers for three months to get one person rental assistance. This is the back and forth of getting the information they need. You sign it, it's not what they want, they send it back to you, no, I'm not getting it. And so it, it's as a whole, I don't think it's just, you know, just us, just even the bureaucracy that you have to go through to even get the assistance. It's hard for the residents. So that's something we have to, have to keep in mind, that they do apply, you can take them up to 90 days for three, four months before they even get an approval. And they can wait 90 days and the county can say, no, we don't have it, we're not gonna give it to you.
Would there be any benefit now to having something like a NICS or let our flyers put up to talk about, it's gonna expire August 31st?
Yeah.
Would there be any benefit to that now?
I'll send you the, the information that we have with, from the county.
Yeah, through tomorrow.
And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure you can put in there that Hope's is willing to help anyone who needs help.
And there are other agencies like Bayon Economic Office, BOF, yes. They get rental assistance, the Shelter gets rental assistance, but their rental assistance is a little different. And I think this is where also the residents need to be aware. So there's COVID assistance that's coming through the county. That's for COVID related issues. You couldn't pay your rent, you couldn't work, you got COVID, lost income, that's when they help you. But if you didn't pay your rent because you chose not to pay your rent, but you were working and doing so forth, then guess what? That's not the program for you. So then you would have to go to someone like BOF, you would have to go to someone like the Shelter that gets funds for rental assistance. And unfortunately, they don't get that much. So those funds, as soon as they get it, it's, I mean, it's really short, a short time before everyone even knows about it, first of all, because it's usually not publicized properly. It's publicized within the counties that, like Bayon publicizes it to Bayon. Hoboken, I haven't really seen the Shelter publicize when they get funding. We usually see like a press release, kind of, and that's how we kind of know it. Another agency is North Hudson Community Action Corps, they also get it. And, but they try to stick to where they serve. So if they serve Union City, they'll say it's for Union City, you kind of have to fight them and say, no, it's given for the entire county. So if you don't know it, they, they'll get away with saying, no, it's just for Union City residents. Because we've had those issues where we've had to fight the agency and say, no, it's for the entire county, not a city. So these are some of the things that the residents go through too as well when they're trying to get assistance.
Thank you, Officer.
Without getting too much into the weeds, 715 families are waiting.
Yeah.
From that, there's a chunk, maybe 300, there are.
Really?
So, and then of that 300, then half of those, not half, of that 300, about a small chunk over the largest part of the money. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna do like different types of kind of like treatments for each one.
Sure, makes sense.
Like for the people that only owe like less than a thousand, hey, we can put you on a simple thing and that's that. For you guys, this is what we're doing for the people. And if we can tackle those big number folks first, we're gonna see that impact right away. And that's, that's the goal, to kind of have different touch, different, different approaches for each one of those.
And that you talked about in the subcommittee meeting, it's not, we're not the only housing authority.
No, no, no.
This is across the board. Our numbers, our deficit that we encounter is pretty average.
And I'm sure you come up with very clear on that. I'm glad you reminded me of that question. He works with many housing authorities, we're all in this boat.
Yeah.
Right now.
And I will point out, sorry to belabor the point, if it does get to the point of requiring a court filing, which obviously you'd like to avoid, I say this all the time, but I hope it's taken as sincere. The goal here is not to offend anyone, it's not to put anyone on the street. It's to collect the money that the housing authority needs to be able to make improvements and run the housing authority day to day for everything. But if it does get to court, the court process is extremely slow right now. Any non-payment case that we would initiate tomorrow would require a notice before it can even be filed, that's a month. Once it's filed, a case that would be filed middle of September, I would guess right now probably wouldn't proceed to an actual trial until the middle of 2023. Everything is probably just under six months out right now. That's how slowly everything is moving. So it behooves the housing authority to try and enter into these repayment agreements without having to go through the immense of paying me to go to court and sitting there to wait for these cases to progress. And the balance is to build up. We wanna get people on the right track so that it doesn't get to one day where a court says, okay, you owe X amount or you have to be out. So that's the goal.
Thank you, Councilor. Appreciate that. And we've been working hard on this, by the way. That's what, Eric, moving forward. Housing choice, oh, oh, management and maintenance is also working on a, an emergency plan with the city's Office of Emergency Management. The city has included us in their task force on that, and we're coordinating with them on getting a brand new emergency reaction plan for the housing authority. Be able to show that to you soon. Housing choice vouchers, we did meet with the Finance Committee this month regarding the concept of putting out a new project based voucher. RFPs, we're going to be meeting again soon to go back over and see if we found some new issues, if we found some good things. So we're gonna be moving back to that committee this coming month to go back over that. Maintenance report, we've been actively chasing holes at most cunks and vermin, so you've heard a lot about that tonight. We're going to fill those holes as quickly as possible. And we are meeting with a wildlife removal from next week. We continue to work on special emergency and preventative repairs. I did put two attachments. One is major projects done by our staff and two is major projects done by outside contractors. We do a lot of work over the course of a month. And if you look at those reports, there's a lot of projects there. We had a major break at Adams this month, which was just huge. We wound up having to shut the water off that night. And again, it takes just a ton of staff work, a ton of time, and sucks up a lot of money. In this particular instance, somebody was putting a pillow down their toilet. And the pillow came down into the bed that was right on the community roof and sat there and expanded. And the water from the whole building was pressing on it and then it exploded out. And there's no way you could stop all the wastewater from coming down for the moment. So yeah, pillow, pillow. So anyway.
It was all the batting, the stuff.
All the batting.
The stuff.
Stuck in the pillow. So that, that type of stuff happens. And our old pipes are old, so they bust too easily. And I am proud of what our staff does on day to day basis. In addition, maintenance is working on the addition of that gate on the fifth side of Mama Johnson?
Yes.
Side of Mama Johnson Field, that, that is in contract of progress. We're gonna be repaving the traffic circle in front of Fox Hill. It needs a repave job there. We're reestablishing our towing contract. We're repairing screens in the hallways and upgraded screens on our laundry and mailrooms. We're looking at getting something that's more vandal proof. We have been having an issue in our laundry rooms, particularly where people have been getting in through that screen. They've been breaking that screen and tampering with the window and coming in through those windows. So we're looking at a higher upgrade on those. We have been pressure washing throughout the housing authority. Thank you for that, Sammy. Your crews have been working hard as long as, as well as tree removal. We are currently painting the Adams Garden lobby and community room. We're working with Verizon to clean up the wires on the outside and inside of our buildings and then tree trimming throughout the housing authority. and then tree trimming throughout the housing authority. Last but not least, this is for our meeting with the Laundry Machine Supply Company. We are not particularly happy with the service we're getting at this moment, but we're meeting with their upper echelon people right now. You may see an RFP coming out on that because we're not particularly happy with the service we're getting around them. Finance, Finance Department has been busy finalizing the housing mortgage finance stuff and working with the, working this month on the adjustments to staff pay through the new, the new union agreement. And Daniel, if you're with us somewhere, we can close out the report.
Right behind you. Hi, everyone. Hello. Just quickly, I just wanted to, under my Snapchat report, under highlights, I really want to thank the Hoboken Food Pantry. They've been doing bi-monthly food distribution to the Hoboken Housing Authority and also the rest of the community. However, they do have a personal care distribution of family hours every second Tuesday, actually every two weeks on Tuesdays. So anyone that's interested wanting to pick up some shampoo and sanitizers and diapers and baby formula and toothpaste and toothbrush, these are very costly items, they can also pick them up at the Hoboken Food Pantry on 1301 Washington Street. We're going to be sending a NICS out when their next distribution or family shopping hours at their location. Also, the director touched on the success of the basketball summer league that we're holding at the Marshall Drive Basketball Court. Actually, any plan or event or initiative that we have is not successful unless we have participation. So I really want to thank the young men that are out there really enjoying the sports and really putting forth their interest in making sure that any plan or activity that we can come up with, you know, they participate. So if we have no participation or interest, any plan that we have is not going to be successful. So I really want to thank those young men for that. On upcoming events, Hope is going to be pampering some of our seniors coming up in the next week. So seniors, get ready. Ice cream, spa day and other fun activities. That's going to be, that information is going to be posted on Friday in the common areas of all of our senior rooms. So please be ready for that, seniors. I think they're having their nails done or something. So many of you guys are really going to be excited for that. Additionally, thanks to the push of the Commissioner, Erica Seitzman, and also our Chair, I believe Michael was also involved. The city of Hoboken is coming to our Mama Johnson Field for Movies Under the Stars. Yay, okay, so we're having meetings, right? So finally, it's been a while. So August 22nd, 8:00 p.m., we're going to have our Movies Under the Stars. So flyers are going to go out tomorrow to all of our common areas, as you can see, I have information on our website. And finally, as you know, we do some events and programs at the Christopher Columbus location. So on the 27th, we're having our family barbecue today. So anyone, please stop by, have fun with us, enjoy some burgers and hot dogs and ice cream and other stuff. And that starts at 2:00.
It's 2:00 to 5:00, right?
Yeah, 2:00 to 5:00, yeah. So on the 27th, hopefully everyone would join us, Christopher, on some music and ice cream. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel, great work. And that concludes my report. Keep making it shorter, man.
Thank you, Director. I guess we can move on to our resolutions now?
We have another, another report of the committee.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Reports of the committee?
And I did in my, in my report, I did mention the facilities and capital improvement. I did mention the Finance Committee that talked about the project-based voucher and the Resident Services Committee meant as well to talk about, as I said in my report, the issue of the Mama Johnson Field use.
Okay. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I have something to add.
Yes.
So we, we had a meeting on Monday and after the meeting, we agreed to get a little more information and also hope to have the entire committee there. And first of all, and second of all, I should have done it first, thank you for appointing me as Chair of the committee, I appreciate it. I think it's important that we all treat ourselves, treat each other with respect and set expectations for everyone. So before I go any further, I'd just like to ask Commissioner Russo, are you okay?
Am I okay?
Yes.
You look okay.
Yes. Okay. You weren't able to attend the committee meeting, or did you join like if I didn't?
No, no, I was, I was unable to attend because a family member's building burned down and I had to make sure that my uncles were okay. So, yeah, I'm okay personally and they're okay, there was no, no injury or anything like that, but it was, seems to be a total loss, although I think the whole building is going to have to be renovated.
They have a place to stay?
Well, they're working on it right now.
Sorry to hear that.
But I appreciate your concern, it's very nice to hear.
I'm very sorry for that. And always count on me to treat you like human being and to be respectful, appreciate it. There was a committee meeting that I didn't attend that that day. I found out that someone close to me had cancer and that's why I didn't attend that. Just as a next time, Commissioner Mustado's brought up to this board concerns about attendance.
I would just like to say, and I'm so sorry to cut you off, as the Chair of this Board, I don't feel that it's anyone's business what is going on in your personal lives. That's number one. If you have a committee meeting and you can't make it and you would like to tell the Director why you can make it, that is absolutely appropriate. I don't think that that's something that should be brought into public or anybody should be forced to say publicly. So that's what I would just like to say and I would, you know, and this is not against you. This is just, I understand where it's coming from in the past and so forth. I just don't want to make it a habit where we're here every month saying, well, why didn't you come to the meeting? Or why didn't you come to the meeting? If there's an issue with anyone on this Board with attending any meeting, I greatly appreciate it you let the Director know. The Director and I are in communication consistently. We have a great communication, so please feel free to let the Director know personally. And that's as far as it should go.
I completely agree with you. Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry, I completely agree with you. Two meetings ago, or the last meeting, I was attacked by Commissioner Mustado.
And I apologize.
You don't need to apologize, you don't need to apologize.
There was no attack, I was simply saying, if you, and again, this is ridiculous, we have to go over this. With all the issues that we have in the housing authority, we got to spend time on this nonsense. All I'm saying was, if you have a committee meeting and we're going over the annual budget, just let either the Director know you can't make it so someone else can attend. That's all I said. The fact was, you weren't there and you didn't communicate that. Now, if I did that, I would expect the same thing.
But I also think with all due respect.
There was no disrespect, it was just a factual statement made. And I hope that's enough that we have to say on this topic.
Correct.
Move on, let's, let's address the issues of the other.
Again, from there on, I would prefer as the Chair that an email be sent to the Director or a text message and it be addressed with the Director and then we can take it from there.
Done.
If there's another person that has, that the alternate is not available, then unfortunately, yes, we would have to reschedule it.
Madam Chair, just aside, from my perspective as the Council President, right, it's your prerogative to set committees and to appoint members of those committees. If you feel, or any chairperson individually from a committee feels that someone's not doing their job on that committee, you most certainly have the ability to change them out, to remove them from that committee. And I would just suggest as the chairperson of the Finance Committee, or any committee for that matter, if there's an issue with the Commissioner and they're not participating, communicate that to the Chair and let the Chair make the decision. Just personally, honestly, I think it is a lot of nonsense that we're continuing to talk about it, but no one should feel like they're being attacked, no one should feel like they're being threatened. This is a board that I think, I say this to Eric all the time, this is the sacred cow, right? This is the one that, leave your damn politics at the door, right? It should never enter, especially in these meetings. We have so many issues in the authority that we should be working on to alleviate for our residents that the politics is nonsense, the, the personal animus toward each other, if in fact that exists, none of that should come to this table, we should put all that aside and do our job. So I do appreciate your concerns, I appreciate you reaching out and expressing that here tonight. You know, Andrew reached out to me the night of the meeting. I told him and I also told the Director. So I appreciate all of you really reaching out and making sure that my family was okay. So thank you very much.
I would like to say that I really want to listen to you, Madam Chair, to Commissioner Russo, because my argument is not fair. And I understand your perspective and I would really wish that this matter is settled, but it isn't settled. I have been targeted on many occasions. There is a history of things that has happened to me as a Commissioner for all terms that I've served as Commissioner here. And frankly, that has never been addressed. And when Commissioner Mustado publicly tries to make me look bad or make look, anyone look bad, I want to go on record and say that I've been on this Board for years. And this is the first time that I'm standing up and saying something about it. Because when somebody criticizes the staff or the police or makes any kind of critical comments and he's done it, I let it go because that's the job of Commissioner, is to ask some tough questions. But when you come after any of the Commissioners, I'm going to defend the Board, I'm going to defend the Commissioners. And I really don't think that it is appropriate to try and embarrass another Commissioner in front of the other Commissioners, in front of the staff. Because then all of us lose a little measure of respect. So I'm going to withhold everything that I have that I could say.
That's not what we want.
Well, then I'll address it privately because I'm not going to do it publicly. I'm going to, I'm going to listen to you and even for his benefit, I'm not going to share what I know.
What we can do is, we can do, we can share whatever we have to say. We just need to do it respectfully amongst each other. Same way we ask our residents that come here and speak, and I personally have asked them, to be respectful of the Board, of the Director, of the staff, of everyone here. I think that we, as elected individuals put on this Board to help the Director, I think we can say what we have to say. I, I'm a component of that. I may say things that many people may not agree with me, but I'm going to say it. But I'm going to say respectfully, I let it go at the door and I move on. And I think that's what we, as a Board and as a whole, need to learn to do. So you have every right to say what you say as long as you say you have to say, as long as it's respectfully. I would never stop you from, from doing that, that's not my job.
I appreciate you saying that. I will think over what you've shared. And I will share with you, I'll share with Vice Chair, what I know and then perhaps we can all get together at the appropriate venue to talk this out.
Absolutely.
I think that's great, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
So I think that it's okay to have these conversations. And I think it's okay for the residents to understand, the city council, you see it all the time. Not everybody gets along all the time, but what's most... But I think people have to understand is that everybody sitting at this table, their number one most priority is the residents. Because you got to remember, we're volunteers with fancy paperwork. Because except for you, we're volunteers with fancy paperwork who are here to serve the residents. And if, and you hope, you hope, you pray, you do everything in your power to think that everybody sitting around you is here. And I haven't seen it, I've seen everybody here do for the residents. And I have not seen anybody not do it. So if we could just remember, that's our focus, that's our primary focus. And sometimes you have a little tact, but families do, which is okay. But just keep in mind, we are volunteers who are here, who are appointed here by various entities to look out for the residents.
I just, I just, I, I have to say, you, you, you're talking about things that you're, first of all, you're being a hypocrite. Second of all...
See, this is exactly where we're going. This is exactly, now we're changing something because you are being disrespectful. I just said, we can say what we have to say as long as we say it respectfully.
Okay, you're right, I take back the hypocrisy.
You sat here and you just called him a hypocrite in front of a room of residents and staff. That is unacceptable. So could we please move on to the resolution, please?
He's making claims that he never brings, keeps things private. He spent 20 minutes talking about how I take deals with developers last year.
I didn't hear anything about developers, Andrew, I believe you not.
It's on record, it was at a meeting.
Okay, but this is something that's brought up before and I just finished saying, from here on, all I would like is for everyone to treat each other respectfully and I ask everyone who comes into this room to treat the staff, the Board, the officers, anybody who's here, just to speak to everyone respectfully. I said that three minutes ago and your first words out of your mouth is, you're a hypocrite.
He's, he's attacking me that he's got information.
Okay, closed, Director, we move on to the resolution. Thank you. Resolution 2022-08-01, resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to approve the minute, the meeting minutes for July 14th, 2022 regular Board meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Mustado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Yes.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-08-02, resolution authorizing the payment of monthly list of bills for the Hoboken Housing Authority.
Motion.
Second. Director, roll call.
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Mustado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
No.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution 2022-08-03, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to renew membership in the New Jersey Public Housing Joint Insurance Fund.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Mustado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
I'm staying.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes.
Resolution number 2022-08-04, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to increase the amount of the contract for Adams and Mugglo Gardens masonry repairs.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, Director?
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Mustado.
Yes.
Aaron Lewit.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
Stay.
Erica Seitzman.
Resolution number 2022-08-05, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to amend, amend the admissions and continued occupancy policy of the Authority.
Motion.
Second.
Would anyone like to say anything?
Madam Chair, so can we just give a brief overview of people that were not here for the August 1st meeting? So that people understand what we're voting on.
Sure, Director.
Absolutely.
Or, or even...
It's up to you, Ms. Manz, would you like me to jump on in?
Sure.
So this first resolution that is currently before the Board is to amend the admissions and continued occupancy policy to revise the language with respect to preferences, to add in a preference for admission for all residents of the City of Hoboken. It currently, there are certain categories of residents of the City of Hoboken who have a preference. And I know there were some questions after the last lottery and waiting list opening and the Board expressed a desire to add an additional preference for all residents of the City of Hoboken going forward. So that wouldn't apply to the lottery that was already held, but anytime the waiting list is opened going forward, there will, if this passes, there will now be a preference for residents of the city. And one thing I will point out, and I know Commissioner Russo, I told you, I apologize, I didn't have the exact number off the top of my head. The HUD review, if this is passed by the Board, the HUD review period is technically 75 days. So HUD can sit on it for 75 days, hopefully they will not, but they can if they want to. So this may not become final if it were submitted as early as tomorrow. May not become final and effective until as late as October 26th. The hope is that HUD will get back to us sooner and approve it. But this now goes to HUD, it doesn't become effective tomorrow, it becomes effective upon HUD approval. And that ball fire will apply to the next resolution as well, the criminal activity policy.
So they approve it in five days, 10 days?
They, they approve it Monday morning if they want to.
But as, but the full line is 75?
If they decide to sit on it after 75... If they decide to sit on it after 75 days, it automatically becomes effective.
So what do we got to call?
We'll keep trying.
So any questions about any of that?
I appreciate it, though, thank you.
So back to your roll call?
Andrew Forbes, Andrew Mustardo.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
Stayed.
Erica Seitzman.
Yes. Resolution number 2022-08-06, a resolution of the Housing Authority of the City of Hoboken to adopt a drug abuse or criminal activity policy.
Motion.
Second. I would just.
Would you like me to move on and share a few words on this as well? So this is intended to replace the current one-strike policy of the authority that has to do with criminal activity for both applicants and participants in the public housing program. Just briefly, the goal here is to have a more comprehensive policy that sets everything out more clearly, and more clearly defines the expectations for both the Housing Authority and residents, and explains what the Housing Authority will do if there is a violation of the policy. One thing that has been discussed a lot, it gets into what the Housing Authority can consider if there, if someone has entered a rehab program, things like that, or depending upon the severity of the offense. It gets into a lot more nuance than the existing one-strike policy, which technically is, if you're involved in criminal activity, you're out. But it also sets clear expectations for the residents who do violate it by saying, if this is your violation, this is what you can expect. So I think it is beneficial to all parties to have everything laid out more clearly and hopefully in a little bit less legalese, more layman's terms.
I just also want to add on top of what you said, Matt, that I, myself, Councilor Russo, Commissioner Russo, Erica Seitzman, and Mr. Forbes, who just recently came on board, this was something that we have been working on, I want to say almost a year, correct? Over a year.
We worked on it a lot, yeah.
Way, way, yes, way over. And I am proud to say that we are probably one of not many housing authorities that kind of take what our residents are going through into consideration, and that our goal here is not to evict anyone, but if they need help, for us to find them the resources to get that help so that they can maintain their home. So I think that makes me, and I hope you guys, extremely proud to pass, to be one of the few housing authorities that takes that into consideration, where a lot of them are more of, it's one strike, and you're out of here, there's no chances. So I'm proud of that.
And if I can just add to that, Madam Chair, I apologize for stepping on you at the end there. It also, the Housing Authority understands that there are some people who will engage in activity that is so severe that it may require evasion.
Correct.
And that I think it better protects the residents who abide by their leads and do everything they're supposed to, because it gives the Housing Authority, your authority to enforce that.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt, and thank you, everyone who worked on this.
Anthony Forbes, Andrew Mustardo.
Yes.
Aaron Lewitt.
Yes.
Barbara Reyes.
Yes.
Michael Russo.
Aye.
James Sanford.
Stayed.
Erica Seitzman.
New business?
Motion, both?
Aye.
All favor?